Good morning from Geneva. This is the second day of public hearings conducted by the Commission of Inquiry on the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and Israel. I'm Chris Sedoti, a Commissioner on the Inquiry. Our Chair, Navi Pille, had intended to conduct these public hearings yesterday and today, but unfortunately she has been unable to travel here from South Africa. So she has asked me, as a Commissioner, to conduct the inquiries on her behalf. Yesterday, we examined sexual and gender-based violence. Today, we hear from medical experts, witnesses on reproductive violence, and attacks on sexual and reproductive healthcare. All of those who appear today are medical experts and witnesses, with one exception, who was an expert but not a witness, and those who have witnessed events in Gaza and the West Bank will be able to give firsthand testimony of what they saw. The first witness is Dr. Zuhair Lana. Dr. Lana, welcome. We are very grateful to you for coming with us today, for appearing and giving evidence about what you saw and experienced in Gaza. Could you please introduce yourself, give a little bit of background, and then make an opening statement about what you experienced, what you would like to tell us? After your statement, I may have some questions further detailed about matters that you have raised, or perhaps there are matters that we are interested in that you haven't covered that I would like to ask you about. But we're in your hands to begin with, so please introduce yourself and make your opening statement.
Good morning. You've invited me to participate in this meeting, an important meeting for me because I was one of several doctors and surgeons going in Gaza in this war and helping people to provide in healthcare and surgery. My name is Zuhair Lana. I am French doctor, surgeon, I'm OB-GYN, obstetrician and gynecologist, and surgeon, of women's surgeon, women's healthcare. I worked with several NGOs about 25 years ago in Africa, in Middle East, and in my original country, Morocco. I work in specialty for prevention of mortality for maternal, maternal death, because, as you know, in a lot of countries, developed countries, or in south, as when you can see this, that we have higher risk of maternal mortality and newborn mortality, and even you have, we have some problems morbidity after delivery or during our life of women. So I provide surgery after injury, after delivery, and teaching surgery in African Middle East. And after this, I always teach in, for training, have training in difficult condition, in remote area or in the villages, midwives working alone to deal with the complication. So this is my job for maybe now more than 25 years. I work with Medicine Sans Frontières, Dr. Without Borders, Medicine du Monde, L'Ordre de Malte, Aid Médicale International, Gynecologie Sans Frontières, et bien d'autres ONG, other NGOs. In Africa, I work in Mali, Congo, Ethiopia, Comor, Mauritania, after VAR or in VAR. In Middle East, I have experience in Afghanistan, in Yemen, and long experience in Syria. I go there for 15 times to provide health and training in the north of Syria and also in Kurdistan. And now, as you know, I'm very, very happy to end of this long war and this suffer of all these people in Syria. And about Gaza and the Sea Jordani, my first time I go to Gaza, to Palestine, in 2002, in the Sea Jordani, I worked in Jenin and in Betlaham and in Nablus, always for training and providing healthcare. And in Gaza, I've been in, unfortunately, all this wartime in 2009, 2014, and stayed a long time, 2014, for 50 days there. For me, it was a very hard war in 2014, but what I see now in this war and in this destruction is unimaginable for me. It's the high, the high thing I can see. I just saw this in pictures when we speak about Berlin after Second War, or all destruction in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. This is only image I can have. So this mass destruction of all this part of war, and this is, this is very, very high thing to accept for us, because we work all our whole life, our whole life for humanity, for saving lives. So in this war, it's beginning at October 2023, and in the second day, I was in the, to provide the healthcare in earthquake in Morocco and time, and I decided to go quickly to Gaza, because I know people in hospitals, I know the situation. I can speak Arabic, so it's easier for me to go in Middle East and to provide healthcare, and now all the rules, and Islamic rules also. So even I am a man, I am obstetrician, I can deal with it. But in the first time, as you know, everything was blocked, nobody can go to Gaza. And in the end of December, the first medical team can go, it's allowed to go by Israeli army and authority, and our NGO can go in the 20th January 2024. This is my first time, I go there and I stay one month. I worked the first time between European hospital, Gaza, it's south of Khan Yunis, and Mother and Children Hospital in Rafah. At that time, all people in Gaza, it's, it was in Rafah, who have 1 million, 1.3 million people in Rafah. And Rafah was originally 250,000, 250,000 people, just small hospital, small maternity. This maternity doing, for example, maybe 15 to 20 delivery day and four C-section. But when I arrive, it was only one maternity for all of displaced people, so provide 80 delivery day and maybe between 20 to 30 C-section. You can imagine how this, all this, this work in just a small maternity with two theater room and just maybe 30 beds. So all these women, when they are displaced, they have, they have just few clothes. Lot of them were in tent or in Mawasi, or others in a small apartment or in classroom. This classroom, we have, in one classroom, you have 50% between women and children, because men is not allowed to be with women and children, they are downstairs. When I work in this maternity, I see this, the work, it was very hard. No women can have perioderal. All those women was malnutritioned. All those women have, don't have perioderal of anesthesia to delivery, it's not possible because 80. And they, they just come, delivery and go, and you have any complication, we have C-section. When, when women delivery, she go home after five, six hours with newborn, and when she have C-section, she, she can stay 25 hours. So this is very, very short, and all women have children, and they, they can't imagine that she go home just after few hours after delivery without perioderal and with newborn. She, if she, she have a chance, she can go in home or classroom. If she don't have chance, she go in a tent. And in this period, one year ago, and in this winter period... We, we, we have, at night, we have between four... Yes, you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. There was a slight interruption for about 10 seconds, but you'll find.
Yes, I can continue?
Please.
It's good?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I speak about hypothermia and about cold, because it was cold at night, 4 degrees or 8 degrees, and in a tent, it's like you sleep outside. And even the mother and family try to take care about the newborn, some of them are that, by hypothermia or others have infection, pneumonia and something like this. So they given us all this mortality, I will speak with this after, they given us the, it's indirect mortality for statistician, but this is a var mortality. It's not include by mortality by shooting, but the death about condition of var, because condition of var, this is very, very unsupportable for everybody. And for me, as women healthcare, for women, it's very, very difficult. You can imagine that you go outside your home, you don't have, you have just one dress or two, some of them don't have underwear, all of women's looking for pampers, for babies. And I heard that a lot of women don't have any, any, any things for her antimony when they have moustache or something like this. And with, in this condition, we don't have enough water to clean their, their clothes. And this suffering continue now, should continue, because every, every time we hear that, have message in this, two days ago, that they have shortest of water to drink, and people have to, to work lot of kilometers to have water, and some of women in near Mawasi use salt women to cleaning and to washing their clothes, and this is not give people allergy and some, something like this. So in this period, I was shocked by all this condition, and when I come back, because I sleep in European hospital and I work in Imariati, so always I go with ambulance 10 kilometer. So I see all this, all these people living in this condition, 1 million point three, and our hospital, it was like camp, because everybody come in hospital, because they, they thinking that they are safe. So in European hospital, we, we have 20,000 to 30,000 people in hospital with their family, with injuries, and when people, we want to discharge them to go home, they don't have home, so they stay with the family in the hospital, and they give, we can't have any, any condition for asymptic work. And you can have people just, just in front of the door of theater room. So this, we have another problem in this, because all our intervention, we have a high rate of infection. And this is make all doctors and surgeon very sad, because we can, if we have one people injured, for example, because in hospital, in European hospital, I am, we don't have OB-G work, so I work with, with people in surgery, and they help for damage control when have shooting people. They have two, three time of Satan for medical care. When people come in, in emergency ward, we have to choose, it makes like triage. People have just a small injury, he can wait. People have a big injury, they let him die. But in sometimes, as European worker, we say that we can, we can help them. I remember when women have shoot in her head, and I was with Professor Pichi, he is an assistive, in this case, we can make them in ICU, we can provide him anesthesia, and and we, and after, we, we do intervention, and we say some of these people we can save. But in condition of Gaza, they decide that we can do anything for her, because she's, maybe, we can do thing. So we saw that people, they are in one bed and for hours to die in. This is very difficult to accept for, for, for medical healthcare. But people in Gaza, they are training to accept this, and this is, and for them, for them it's very hard, because when they discuss between, between them, we tell, yes, if you have, for example, people with big injury or people with over 60, we don't do, don't take, but if he is your father, if he is your uncle, if he is your family, you do it or we do it. And this is, this is very difficult for psychology and for all staff to do a good, good job in good condition. After this, when you have people injured, we go to a theater room, we try to help him, we try to do, to do operation, we do it for hours with four, five surgeon, two anestheticians, blood, plasma, medicine, and you know, the day after that, he is dying. This is give us very shock, because you say that you provide all, a lot of, lot of effort for the result, it's very weak, and at the end, all of, all of this injury is between this var, this long var, it's all var, it's like this, but, but we can't accept as doctors and as human being. So this is maybe the big things I see in my first trip in Gaza. I have another trip in April to May. In April to May, we are, we was the first big team allowed to go in the north. So we go by Israeli checkpoint in Nizarim. It was a very difficult experience, because we know that in a var, the security is very weak. We feel that we were in security in hospital, but outside hospital, we can be, we can be injured, because we was, we were near someone target or near place you don't be, to be there. So we go in the north, and this is in the first time I see all this destruction, all this, all my, all this kilometer, because between European hospital to Kamaradwan, maybe you have 30 kilometer, but we do it in six hour by checkpoint, by, we have, when you go to Gaza, I have to be really patient. And when you arrive in Kamaradwan hospital, it was this mother and pediatric hospital, and now Kamaradwan is, everybody know it, because the chief of director is Osama Abu Safiya. I meet, meet him in this time, but now he is, he is in jail, and all, all healthcare hope it be released in a few time, because we don't see, we don't see anything, anything other about taking care of patient, because lot of people, a lot of people in this hospital was still children. But in the var, we provide surgery from people where there are injured, when we have some specialty, and we have in our team two, two German surgeon, one vascular and one cyst, and those guy do lot of surgery, because all of team of the north, he coming in the south, and north, north is, it was desert form specialty. So for me, I don't do lot of OB-G work in the north, because delivery was very weak. North, as you, as you know, it was 1 million point five, and in this time, it was just 400,000 people, and delivery was very weak, and we can provide some, some gynecologic intervention with my colleague there, always training, even in the var, to training people as my, my knowledge in this, in this, in this condition. So when we say the north, north is different from south, because it's all more, more destruction, more, more dangerous, and even now, people, when they return, they return in the condition very, very difficult, and they, they suffering about life, because everything is destroyed. You don't have water, you don't have electricity, you don't have... And you have rubbish everywhere we go. As in the south, it was very, 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 very difficult, because all, all, all work from to do municipality is closed. So people, when they are, when they are in some place, they just put rubbish in the corner, and there's rubbish, and you know, it coming with musticles, with, it's very, very, we can't live in this condition, but people, we have, they have to deal with. The condition is, we can't describe, but just we passed one day there, and you are shocked, you are shocked, because we, all this atmosphere for, for live, it's not safe, it's not safe, and it's, it's not, no safe, no healthy, and you, no human. And let's speak about my third, third mission. It was in July with the, with the two OB-G gynecologists from America, and we worked at that time in Nassar, because Nassar, it was rehabilitate. And I always, when was in Gaza, we see that doctors and all people have this, they are this genius to rehabilitate, always to want to work, as they know, in Indonesian hospital in the north, they want to do it in Shifa, Shifa is very, is destroyed in totality, and they want to, and they do it in Nassar, because Nassar, it was, wasn't demolition like, like Shifa. So they rehabilitate Nassar hospital, and fortunately, we have some Occidental NGO from America, like IRC, from UK, like UK Med, and from France, like Medicine Sans Frontières, they can, and also ICRC, they can work with, with hospital and have some places. For example, in Nassar, we worked in our, our place, we have Doctor Without Borders, Medicine Sans Frontières, Spain, and they taking care for, for children and women, and women services. UK Med take care for emergency and theater, and it's like this. And they, these people, this NGO, these big NGOs, is allowed to bring more, more healthcare and more helping, and also they can pay to health workers, because lot of health workers don't have any salary for long, all these things, they just have some, some intensive, like for example, $800 in two months, it's not enough, it's nothing. It's because now in Gaza, when you go outside, we can have some things to buy, but the price is very, very high. High, for example, one liter from, from gas well, it's, it was $20. One liter of benzene essence, it was $40. In one time, for people, smoking people, one cigarette, one cigarette, $4. This is, this is unimaginable to live with this condition, but people help themselves and help each other, and they have also this kind of family, and they can, they can help in each other. And in my, in my time there, every, every time with people, and we remark with, with my colleague, French colleague, that people don't have any, any hate about me, even Israeli, but they just want life and want to this var finish, to finish, and, and because it was very hard for them, they destroyed their life, destroyed their past, and, and they make their future very, very black, and they don't know where, where they go. But lot of them want to stay, and some of them want to go to other place, because they see that there are no life now in Gaza, and their children, it's no school, but this is the second year, lot of people are, have no, they don't know about the future, they don't know, they are, they are just, they just asking to, to this thing, to this far to end. And I want just tell one thing, in my experience, I always, I've been in, in all of this country, I told, I told about this in the beginning of my, my testimony, that everybody, everywhere when you have var, people can come in another country, safe. But in Gaza, in Gaza, this is the first time in, people didn't go anywhere, they just run, they turn around, and first time they go to Rafah, and after, and after they go to Mawasi, but Mawasi is safe, but sometimes when you have target point, people, people dying. But sometimes when you have target point, uh, people, people dying. In the, in, uh, after, when, when, uh, when, when army go to Rafah, people coming to, to the Al Balah. And after there are, after, uh, this week ceasefire, they can go in, in, near their home because there are no home. Because as you know, se- seventy percent maybe of, of, of homes are, are destroyed with this, this corruption. Uh, they just have, they can make tent or the, the near their home. And if, if this catastrophe is a big catastrophe in the world, uh, and in politically or in, uh, in, in helping, uh, in stopping this V A R or helping to making, to making sense of their life, uh, we, everybody waiting for this. And fortunately, we can, we can see, uh, things, uh, happen. Maybe, maybe Trump want to, to put all these people, uh, outside. But it's difficult because, uh, these people, as I know them, uh, they are attached, uh, for, for their land. And we hope that this V A R will finish, uh, finish soon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lana. Um, thank you for that description of your engagement with, with Gaza over many years. Um, you mentioned you have been there three times since the, the current fighting began in October twenty twenty-three. Looking at each of those visits of yours, what changes have you seen in the provision of prenatal and postnatal care and maternity care? And what changes in the condition of mothers, new mothers and newborn babies over those three visits?
Uh, I know Gaza before this war. And I know that in Gaza, there's just two mil-, two, two point three million people. They have, they, they have thirty-two hospitals. Those is very health, healthcare, it was very, very nice in Gaza, even there was in blockers. Because you have, uh, uh, public hospital. We, they have a private hospital and they have, uh, social hospital, people, people pay, but just, uh, just small thing. And this, and they have lot of doctors, lot of nurses and very, very nice. Because the, the, in Gaza also, they have two, uh, uh, two, two medical school. And they can work very, very nice and all people come in from outside to help them. And, and you know, in, in, for example, in, in Shifa, uh, I meet, uh, Dr. Marwan, he trying to, to make transportation for, for liver. Transportation for liver, they just made in France, also in Paris, just in, in three hospi- in three hospitals. Uh, they, they trying to be in the, in the best. For women and children, they, ten, ninety-six percent, I think, or, or ninety-eight percent delivery were in hospitals. For my country in Morocco, my original country, just sixty percent. Now, this is a difference. There, it was, the people have very, very healthcare and all women could come in every month to see doctors, to have, to have analysis, to have sonography every month and to have a delivery in the good condition. And this is changed very quick with this V A R. Because we have blockers, lot of women, delivery at, in, in school, in, in, at, at home, uh, by healthcare and so we can have problems. Uh, as I, I mentioned in the, my, my first time, we have a lot of delivery in same place. We have twenty, uh, in the V A R, we estimate they have sixty thousand, uh, women pregnant. Uh, now estimation, it's fifty percent, uh, fifty, fifty thousand, uh, pregnant women. Because in the, in condition of V A R, in my experience, people don't, don't, won't have any contraception. And, uh, but they, if, they continue to have, to, to, to have sexual relation if they, if they, if they are alone, if, if they can. Uh, because some of men now, uh, are, in, are very far from, uh, for, for, for women. But if, if they are, they are together, they, 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 they can have, uh, uh, relations, uh, sexual relation and they, they, we have pregnancy. And we, we have there on all V A R that, that pregnancy maybe sometimes, uh, they are, uh, level because women don't thinking about contraception, they don't have it. Uh, and all system i- is collapsed now, uh, for, for, for taking care for women. As I mentioned also, uh, people can't eat a lot. Because, uh, for long time, they don't have any meat. And they, they have problems for, for bread, they have problems for vegetable. And vegetable is very, very expensive, uh, even, even we can found it in market. They don't have, uh, uh, good water. And all these women, when we, 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 we go to, to C-section and we, we take, uh, a rate of hemoglobin, we found just between eight and the ten. Uh, this is very, uh, this, the, the, the medium for women is twelve and the nice, it's fourteen. And in this condition, it's very difficult. And when, when you have newborn, if newborn have problems, they provide some. Because they, they have in Imaraty first and now, now Nassar. And even, uh, also, uh, before in Kamaradwan, when I work, uh, we can provide, uh, healthcare from newborn. But as I, as I see, lot of them dying, lot of them dying because ru- high risk of, of higher infection and diet about one nutrition. We have some, some story, some nice story, for example, uh, to, to a new, two newborn in six month and he can alive. Or newborn in, in one place, he come in another place. But this is just, this is just story, this is a small story. But the higher risk of have problem, if your problem is, 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 is big, you die. And this is give us high rate of mortality. If, if you, you know that the Lancet do, uh, two paper about Gaza. One last year and one just recently. And in last year, they estimate that, uh, uh, now we are in one hundred eighty thousand mortality. And now they estimate that we have forty hundred thousand mortality. Because I, I was in, I was in statistics in, in, uh, with mortality and mortality. When you have one mortality, you can have three or four other mortality, they, they don't know. If you have mortality by shooting, we can have other mortality by, uh, indirect causes. For example, I have a story about one young woman, just twenty-four ye- years. Uh, she, she was diabetic and have, uh, have children, three years. And they tell me to come in to see her in ICU in Orosian Hospital. Because she was in a coma acidocytotic, she don't take insulin for five da- days. And they have the major complication of, of acidocytosis and in a diabetic. And she was pregnant in six month and pregnancy, they, they don't help him to be well. So I have to pref- perform C-section quickly, but she, she delivery after just three, thirty minutes. And her, her, uh, condition was, was little bit, uh, good. But unfortunately, in the night, she, she was in a very, uh, she was in acid, uh, uh, she do not, she not well and in morning she dying. This is, this is, this death of this children, of this newborn, of this woman. And, uh, for, for me, uh, this is indirect for V A R. Because with insulin, uh, she don't have this major complication. And other, other thing, when we was in ICU, we see that the, the, the health, the health provide in ICU, it was not efficient. Because in this condition, we have to, we have to give, and we, we have to give insulin, uh, in a pump, they give it. But we have, we have to, to, to see, uh, 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 and to, to take sample of blood every half of hour to see enogram. And they can't do it. So they just treated like this blunt. So, and they, she collapsed a- after. Uh, this is, this is one ca- one case, uh, I don't, uh, I can't, I can't forget. Other case also, uh, one, one woman come in. She have, uh, five C-section before and she can't come in quickly to Imaraty. She come, she come after, because as you know, we, uh, we don't have, uh, uh, enough of gasoline, of, of benzene. And the transport is, is very weak. So people, when, when to go to point one to one two, she have to, to, to looking for, 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 for car or something like this. And they don't, they don't found it very quick. And she come late of, of, even found it, they have to pay and some of them, they don't have money. And she come late to hospital. When she come late, uterus was, uh, was, uh, ex- uh, rupture, in rupture uterus and rupture of, uh, and, and the, the, the baby was dying. Uh, the, I, I wasn't there, the, the, this shift, the, they provided, uh, healthcare and they, they can secure uterus. But this woman, uh, after do septuses. And we can't, uh, follow her very, uh, as, as you have to, to do it. And I, she, she have septicemia and she dying. This is, this, this is, that, this is lose, we lose women like this. And when we lose one woman, we, we, we break family. Because this women have four children and one husband. Uh, even in Gaza, uh, the family is, is closed. But with this V A R, it's, it's make it very difficult to, to accept each others. And when we, we break women, we break a family and we break society.
Over the course of your three visits last year, um, did you feel that the situation for women in delivery and newborn babies got worse or better or didn't change?
It depend, uh, uh, ma- maybe worst, maybe worst because, uh, when people was in Rafah, uh, they, they, they have city not destroyed. So there are maybe, there are a lot of people in, in small place. But city of Rafah, even it was small, it's not destroyed. Now people live in destroyed, all banned. And, uh, and the situation, it's, it's, it's very, very difficult. Uh, it's, for me, it's worse, yes.
It's worse. You mentioned, um, deliveries taking place without anesthesia, epidural or other anesthesia. In your experience, did you encounter, um, Caesarian sections occurring without anesthesia as well or was there enough anesthesia for all C-sections?
Uh, no, they, I, I don't see this because, uh, now we have a chance, uh, because we can provide, uh, C-section by, uh, uh, ra- radical, uh, Russian anesthesia.
Yeah.
And in Russian anesthesia, they need, they need some anesthesia, but, but you can, you can, uh, anesthetic can, uh, can, can do with cocktail and do it for lot of women's. So fortunately, we have this and I never seen one C-section without anesthesia. But we can provide, uh, with just, uh, uh, local anesthesia. But I hear about other, other kind of, 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 uh, operation. But mainly operation doing without anesthesia or with, with just with, in, in, in some condition. Because we, we have to see this also. In this V A R, sometimes, uh, the, the Israeli army, the authority, uh, la- la- gi- give, give the, give the, uh, we, we can, uh, give us the chance to be there and, 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 and they can, uh, uh, they can let, uh, some medicine to enter. They have list of medicine also, but we, we can, we can have some, some medicines, some. And when, when all our, our teams come in, in the first time by, by Rafah, we, we, we provide with us lot of, of medicine. Because we were in connected by, by doctors inside and they tell us what we have, what they need. Now, when Rafah is closed after seven May, uh, last year, all be, all medical staff, uh, allowed to, to be inside, uh, coming from, uh, from Jordan and Israel. And they are not allowed to, to bring with them any med- any medication. And this may be, uh, uh, doing things worst.
Right. Um, have you seen an increase in the death rate amongst newborn babies?
I don't, I don't understand question.
I'm sorry. Uh, during the, the times, the three trips that you went, did you experience a greater number of newborn babies dying? Or did the numbers stay about the same?
I, I don't have exactly numbers because it's very changing and, uh, but, uh, no, I don't have exactly number. Uh, you, you know, that, that you have number in, in, in authority now staying in Gaza. But even this, this number, it's just the baby dies in hospitals. Uh, because when they have, they have some, one rule in, in Gaza. Once, when even people, when they die outside, they, they bring it in hospital for two things. The first one, the family want always to, to see people doing something for, for their baby or women or, or man to help them to life. Because as human being, we want, we want the life. So we, we want always, even people, they seeing this like dying. And the other, other thing, other thing, uh, they, when, when they coming in hospital, they are registration. But people outside, we see dying outside as, and, and they, they, uh, they don't, they don't bring them in, in hospital, we can't have any number. We can't have a number of all these people dying outside. Because if, if people are sure he's dying, they, they just taking him, uh, in, in cemetery. Or in, in somewhere when they can put it in, in the sand. Because all cemetery now, uh, was destroyed and the people, they, they, they trying to, to, to put their, the body of their family when, when they can.
Okay. You mentioned the lack of medicines, medication. Did you find any difficulty with medical equipment that you required for surgery or for the care of patients?
Oh, yes, of course, because, uh, medical equipment, unfortunately, lot of them was destroyed. Destroyed just by bomb, but destroyed when the soldiers passed in, 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 in services. It just destroyed, uh, li- like this. Uh, and this is, this is a very bad thing. Be- because destroying medical equipment is destroy life also. Uh, and, uh, and when we work, we work just by minimal, minimal thing. For example, in, in all Gaza, we have just one CT scan in one place. Uh, so some, some of, some of time, we just de- dealing by, by clinic. And we go to theater room because we don't have time to, to do, uh, CT. We don't have time, we don't have, we don't allow to have, uh, to have CT scan. For example, in, uh, in, in Nassar, uh, before V A R, they have ten of sonography. Now, uh, they have just three, uh, and they deal with, with, for all services. Now, uh they have just three, uh and they deal with with for all services. Uh and but our, uh when we can come in Rafah. We we bringing some small so- sonograph butterfly. But now we are not allowed to to bring it to helping people. Uh the now in the in in philosophy of var. Uh when when the var is very, very long, they maybe we can help. We can provide some medicine and some equipment, but this long of 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 intensity. Of high intensity of var, uh give give people more destruction. Uh as 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 uh as maybe Samsung uh. Uh in Art of God, uh of 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 war in his book. But now we are in 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 this condition of very intensive and very long. And and this and this very and this long uh condition. Uh give e- even we can give, but we give just small between huge huge need.
Did you yourself encounter women or newborn patients? Who you considered required medical evacuation outside Gaza for treatment? And were they able to be evacuated?
I think that that's it, this virus is very. When when I was in in Gaza, in in var in two thousand fourteen, ten years ago. Uh we have evacuation, all all of patient need to evacuation and we have lot of embolism. Yellow embolism from Egypt coming through Rafah, but in this in this var. All people need evacuation, they can't go, just just few few of them. Uh from ICRC or from uh and lot of them need evacuation, staying to waiting, waiting, waiting after dying. I don't speak about all people need the treatment of cancer. Of need of the north, for example, when when they need the uh dialysis. They can't provide dialysis for 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 dies, so they have complication and they dying. No, we uh in in this var, it was very exceptional, I think, because. Uh thi- this var, it's it's against all all these people and this it's punishment of all of them.
You mentioned in your introduction, um other countries and situations where you have undertaken medical missions. Uh including in the list you gave, Afghanistan, Syria. How do you compare the seriousness of the situation? In maternity, obstetrics and gynecology in Gaza with what you have found in other places?
It's different be- because in in the in the. In undeveloped people, uh uh country as Africa or or Yemen or Afghanistan. Have uh where we fighting about life for for people because they are in remote area. I am I am as OBG, I know that we have one hundred case of delivery. Maybe fifteen need C-section and maybe fifteen need helping of delivery. Others can maybe delivery uh by just just midwife in home. But in this case, in this thirty or forty case, they have they need a help. If you don't help them, you can have complication for women, uh first for for newborn because. He 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 can dying, he can have distress and dying in in the body of in uterus or dying after delivery. And you can have problem of him dying or have major complication. But in a var, we have other other pro- problems because people can't can't move. Uh some of women, pregnant women will be shot shoot because they're just moving. To to hospital, uh to delivery, but she was shooting on 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 the way. Uh and and thi- this problem we don't have in in other country. Uh and and as I mentioned, uh people in Gaza. Uh have good condition of health uh be- before this var. And now everything it changed it changed it for 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 them, so they they have to deal with. And their condition, this condition is for me this var, as I. I speak, uh I I I tell in interview, it's var against women. Uh because when when women, women is the resistance, it's women is resilience. And this women and and now women don't want to to be in pregnancy in a var. But in in condition of uh of uh of proximity and. She and and I I mentioned before, they don't have uh uh contraception. Uh pills, don't have IDU, IDU, they can have. Uh now it's it's not it's not good for var because she can have infection. Uh in this condition, co- uh this best condition to 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 be pregnant. And and to have and to have delivery in the good good condition.
Have you encountered situations where the lack of medicines and the lack of medical equipment? Is as bad as you described in Gaza?
Maybe maybe in the in 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 Yemen, in Yemen, it was it was very bad and even Africa also. Africa, it was it was very bad, uh because uh the the condition of of work. It's still, it's bad, uh maybe I don't understand question.
No, no, I I think you understand, that's that's what I was, I was just looking at the comparison. Um.
Compare.
Yeah. You have been, as you described, many times in Gaza. Since this latest fighting started almost a year and a half ago and you were there before. During your visits during this conflict, uh have you seen any evidence? Or have you at any time been suspicious that um militants? Um Hamas militants, PIJ militants have been using the hospital for any military purpose?
No, no, we don't see it, we don't see, no. Uh me, I visit uh some of hospitals, uh uh but. Uh it's uh we 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 have to to separate between uh. Between some of uh between Hamas as as group, army group or or. Or Qassam, uh and 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 people uh ruling the ruling the healthcare. They are they are also, they are they are also uh uh administration from Ha- from Hamas. Because Hamas ruling all Gaza and these people in first time, they take their their. Desk in Imarati Hospital, mother and children and Israeli now this. And now there are in in Nasir and Israeli Authority now this because. They they dealing with all NGOs there, when you are NGOs, we come to to see the responsible. And 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 to 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 speak with with him and and. And all NGOs have to have to to deal with them. Because now, for example, if if someone want to go to Gaza, uh it's NGO with deal with the with WHO. WHO uh send you in hospital with collaboration with the. With responsible of healthcare there and the responsible of healthcare uh in Gaza, there are from from administration of Hamas. There's there, I know them from ten years, it's same. Uh but now they are in in Nasir and we can't work in Gaza without dealing with them. Also medicines from there and all NGOs dealing with them to go, they 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 tell you that you can go in this hospital. And in the hospital and 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 this what I see. But other thing of of gun, of of things, no, we don't see and they use hospital as. As 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 a uh. Military base, no, and in the rules, in the rules, uh. They they can't do it be- because because i- if if they do it, they 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 give. They give uh uh possibility to army to to bombard. As you you notice, uh that all all target point now is is calculated by. By uh AI, intelligence artificial, so we have a high high target point now. Everywhere, everywhere, everywhere and we have target point in Mawasi, it was safe and is hospitals. As hospitals, when 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 we go in hospitals, when when we see. Uh it's difficult to have military base, difficult.
And you didn't see any weapon stores in a hospital?
Weapon, no.
Right, or armed fighters?
No.
Okay, thank you. And oh, sorry, and.
Uh one one time, we we come in from our our because we were in Mawasi. And we come in to hospital and one of my team, uh it was OBG from America. She taken her her phone and she want to she want to film the the trip. And we were stopped by guys with 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 guns. She don't speak with, I speak I speak with them that we just, we are doctors, we come in and. And they tell, I tell them, uh it's it's good to have some people. Uh some people to to manage the city because city without any 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 police, it's very. Now it's lot of things can come in, the people beat some because they're nervous, some have something like this. Or teeth or or like this, I they they tell us, we are not the police, we are Qassam. Oh, no, 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 and when we come back then, you know, if if Qassam this was target, we will target with 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 him. It was, it's not very funny, but within that's something, sometime we we take a risk. When when we are near some some people, some fighter people. This the first time we see fighter people and he told me that that he is from Qassam.
Thank you very much for what you have told us, are there any things you would like to add?
I thank you for inviting me for this testimony, I I. I just want to this var finish, I I want to say that there are. Some of Palestinian uh going to Israel to have health providing care before this var. Because lot of of Israeli doctors and surgeons. Uh doing a good job in their country and to provide this in to Palestinian also. And I meet also some people working in in Israel. And they they working in a good condition also. And for me, it's this var uh have to finish, uh because people suffering a lot. And we can we can open a new new page for for saving lives in each war. Saving lives in Jewish and sh- saving life in Palestinian. Because uh we can we can live and they can live in this land uh for together.
Good. Thank you very much, Dr. Lana, we we've greatly appreciated what you have told us today. Um your willingness to appear and to give us the information from your firsthand experience in Gaza. Um we have not been able to visit. You can tell us things that we can't see ourselves.
This is not really very good, but I tried to do my best.
It's perfectly fine, thank you very much, thank you. So we will adjourn adjourn the session at this stage and resume at three P M Geneva time. Which is around two and a half hours from now, thank you very much and thank you again, Dr. Lana.
Thank you.